Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. It's September the 18th, 2017. The time is 6:01, and I'm going to have the clerk call the roll.
Good evening. Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bullock?
Here.
Councilmember Douglas?
Present.
Councilmember Elliott?
Present.
Councilmember McElDowney?
Here.
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Carson?
Present.
Councilmember Teeter?
Here.
Councilmember Amador?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, we are all here this evening. Before we get started, I always do a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And tonight, I want to have everybody keeping their thoughts and prayers. Lester Arnold is a longtime resident of Commerce City, was also one of the principals of Adams City High School, and the Lester Arnold High School was named after the man. And from my understanding, he's also a two-time Bronze Star recipient. One of those Bronze Stars was pinned on him by General Patton himself. So, we lost a longtime member of our community that really did a lot for the youth in this community, and he was overall just really a good person. So, keep him and his family in your prayers. He is preceded in death by his wife, but he lived a very long life. Rick, what was he, 97?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight years old. If I can only hope to make it close to that. So, with that, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to ask the staff to please pass the microphone around, allow the audience the opportunity to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Oscar Madera?
Nicole Frank?
Good evening, I'm Benjamin Hughesman.
Carol Lucero?
Peter Lucero?
Stephanie Levine?
Angela Herrera?
Julia Garza?
Frances Marlin?
Michelle Sutton?
Good evening, Mark Cruz?
Neil Peterson?
Heather Dawson?
Carlos Altosar with Elite Transport Services?
Luisa Zerenter with Elite Transport?
Ho Lim, L-I-M?
Scott Meeger?
Jacob Meeger?
Kim Killian Meeger?
Ally Jean?
Keely Thompson?
Kenny Churches?
Steve Tims, Community Development?
Brad Calendar, Community Development?
Ted Tonus?
Lawrence Deppenbush?
Donald Austin?
Mark Hardika?
Matt Duress?
Phil Lawler?
Angela Lawler?
Cheryl Kirstens, Finance?
Carolyn Keith, Parks, Recreation and Golf?
Maria DeAndre, Public Works?
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources?
Robert Younger?
All righty, thank you all for being here, and I always try to make note of the fact that there's a lot of young people in the audience. So, to all of you that are young and here tonight, and your mom and dad's probably drug you down here against your will, we're glad that you're here tonight, and hopefully you'll learn a little something, but we like to have you in the audience. So, you're welcome back anytime, okay? Great. All right, first item on the agenda is always citizen communication. And because we have some of our candidates for office in the room with us tonight, per city council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before the city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for three minutes, name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes, after I've heard from everybody. But I also want to mention that we do not allow any campaigning, not that any of the candidates came here tonight intending to campaign, but I always have to say that if you do get called up and you have the microphone, we don't allow campaigning because we're on city property. So, I noticed tonight, we have 13 people signed up for citizen communication, and I don't know if everybody knew what this sign-up sheet was for, but it's when I call your name to come up to the podium to speak. I know we have several land use items on the agenda tonight, so if you signed up and you wanted to speak during that land use item, you need to wait until that land use item comes up on the agenda, you'll still be given the opportunity to get up and speak. So, I want to go through these, and if you thought it was just a sign-up list, that's fine, then just tell me no, I thought it was a sign-up list, and I'll move to the next person. If you did sign up for a land use item that's on the agenda for later in the meeting, then you can just say, oh, wait until the land use item comes up. And if you came in because you wanted to complain about a pothole or something, or wanted to communicate with this council on anything that's not on the agenda, then you come up and you have your three minutes at the microphone, and we'll get through this. So, I know we have the Adams City Student Council here tonight, and I know they want to come up because homecoming's on its way. So, will you three please come up and tell us about what's getting ready to happen at Adams City High School?
Good evening, my name is Angela Herrera.
I'm Julia Garza.
Good evening, my name's Stephanie Levine, I'm their teacher, even though I don't look like it, but they're student council sponsor at Adams City High School.
Seventy-two-hundred Quebec, right?
Yes, sir.
For the record. All right, go right ahead.
All right. We would just, on behalf of Adams City Student Council, we would like to invite you, our council, to our homecoming festivities. Our festivities will be kicked off with the Part of Puff game, which will be on Friday, September 22nd, and be from 7 to 9. That will be followed by our bonfire, which will be from 9 to 11, and it will be held at Adams City High School in front of the tennis court. Our activities will continue on Saturday, September 23rd, with the parade that starts on 54th and Olive, and will end at the high school as usual. The parade will start at 9 and end around, we're planning that it would end around 11. A barbecue will be put on by RTC, and that will be followed by the Kearney and Adams City Middle Football Game after. Our homecoming football game against Littleton High School will start at 1 that same Saturday, and it will be followed by our homecoming dance, which will start at 7 and end at 10:30. We look forward to seeing you guys at some of our homecoming festivities.
All right, before you leave, I know there's going to be some folks that want to communicate from the council, because as I was telling you earlier, four of us are alumni from Adams City High School. And I know last year, we tried to help out a little bit. The council donated a little bit of funds out of our certain budget we have for that kind of stuff, to help the class out for homecoming for the parade. So, I want to turn over to some of the council members, especially those alumni. I'm going to start with Mr. Amador.
Can I go last?
Okay. All right, we'll go to the oldest to the youngest. How's that? Rick? Mr. Teeter?
Okay, well, thank you very much. I always look forward for this day. I did participate and play football in that fine game back in 1966, and we beat Brighton 34 to nothing for our homecoming. And I wish you luck. I know it's a great festivity, it's a great spirit time for this week, and if you have as much fun as we did back in 1966, you will have a good time. Thank you.
All right. Crystal?
Thank you, Mayor. Class of 87 in the House. Thank you so much for the invitation, I always look forward to these events. I want to know, though, are we allowed to participate in any of the dress-up days? If we happen to just show up at the school, we won't get escorted off the grounds, just to pay a visit? Okay, I probably would be the only one on council to do that, but anyway, just looking forward to it. I do plan on attending the parade, that's always a fun event, a lot of excitement and just high spirit the whole day long, so I wish you well in the game.
All right, back to Mr. Amador.
All right, thank you. So, I think in your opening remarks, you left out a couple of items. Tuesday is Pack the House Soccer Game at Crowfield. Is that boys or is that girls playing? And who are they playing?
Boys soccer. I think they're playing...
Oh, here we go, it's on the back, hey, look at that.
Yeah, it says on your calendar, I believe, you got the calendar, but it's on the back side of that.
North Glenn. North Glenn. Very good.
There we go, yeah.
And then also, you didn't mention on Thursday, September 21st, Pack the House Volleyball Game inside the gym at the Eagles Nest.
Yeah.
Starting at... Four. Four, there we go. So, again, it's always a good time to go and see the homecoming events, class of 93, thank you. And good luck in your football game, and enjoy the parade, and if there's anything that we can help out as a city, and I know that we have, we're all set for permits and everything else that we need, so I believe the communication is happening and it's there, so thank you.
And, you know, I would just like to say, enjoy it, because when you get to be my age and you look back, you don't get a second chance to do your homecomings and your parades and all that twice. So, enjoy it, because it only happens those couple of times in your young lives, and hopefully you guys win your games, everybody's rooting for the home team, and we'll do our best as council members to try to attend the different events, and we all have a list of those events on this calendar. So, thank you for providing that, thanks for coming in tonight, and if you need anything from us in the future, please don't hesitate to come back and visit. Mr. Douglas, you have something?
Oh, yes, I just wanted to say, I had $2 to attend at Prairie View High School, and at that time, I had to play Adams City High School several times for football and for volleyball, sorry, remember, come and watch the kids play. So, I'll be there Friday for the bonfire, and then on Saturday for the parade, and also on the game, so, thank you for coming in, and go Eagles.
Yeah, have a good time, we'll see you there. Anything else?
Yeah, just say thank you, guys, for your support in making all of this happen. I know quite a few of you had a lot of say in making sure all these events happened for the kids, and they're pretty pumped about it, so thank you.
It's a community, it's not just a school district event, it's a community event, and we need to strive to make sure that we're there to support both districts, 27J and 14, in all of their efforts. So, when you need something, that's why you see, like I said, we have the four of us that graduated from Adams City, and most of my kids graduated from Prairie View, so I have to support both. So, that's what community's about, it's not just a school district, it's not just a city, it's about the people within it. So, go and enjoy yourselves, and we'll look forward to seeing you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Mr. Younger? Mr. Younger? Come on up. Did you... All right, that's what I needed to know, we'll cross you off the list, and if you want to talk during the zoning, we will. Oscar Madera? Nope, Oscar's one of our candidates, so we'll move on. Donald Austin, I know he wants to come talk. Glad you're here.
My name is Donald Austin, I'm the vice president at the Suncor Commerce City Refinery. Our address is 5801 Brighton Boulevard.
Great.
My purpose for coming along tonight was to say hi, introduce myself, and as a neighbor, I'd like to get to know you. So, just to start that off, just give you some background about myself, I've been around in the refining industry for 37 years. I started in Scotland, at a refinery in Grange Mouth. I'm a chemical engineer, and I've worked in the UK, Germany, Canada, and now in the US, so I have a bit of experience in the refining business. Previous to coming here, I was in Alberta, where I led the upgrading, it's like a refinery, in our oil sands operations in Fort McMurray. So, again, this is a new venture for me, and I look forward to meeting and working with our neighbors, and especially yourself. One thing I would like to do is to invite you to come along and meet with my leadership team at appropriate time, and I'll leave that for you to take that offer as you see fit. But I'd love to talk about our relationship with you, the issues you're having, understand them, and be that good neighbor that we like to be. Really, that's all I'd like to say.
Well, I'm glad you're here. I did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Austin the other day, change of leadership at the Suncor Refinery. It's one of the partnerships that Commerce City always prides itself on with our biggest industrial users, to make sure that we work well together, make sure that things are safe at the refinery, make sure that Suncor is constantly contributing as an industrial citizen of this community as well. So, thank you for coming in, letting us know who you are, and reaching out to the folks. I know I did receive a public notice today that Suncor will be doing live fire training this Thursday.
That's correct.
So, constantly striving to keep everything safe. So, thank you for coming in, and we look forward to our relationship as it grows over time.
I'd love to meet you all, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Lisa Zevinger? Nope, you're good? All right, just want to make sure. Carlos? You're good? All right, going down the list. Ted? All right, Ted's good. Michelle? Good? All right. Mark? Andrew's got it. Peter? Okay? Carol? We're all good, we went through that 13 pretty quick.
Bob Gaylor.
And before I go any further, it is an honor to have our, has been, had been, had been our city attorney forever, and we hated to see him go, back in this room, and it's the Bob Gaylor Room to boot. So, welcome, Mr. Gaylor.
Well, thanks. Well, Bob Gaylor, 11878 Park East Road, Aurora, Colorado. It's been almost a year and a half since I spoke in these council chambers, and I just wanted to come by, it's been too long, but I wanted to come by and say hello to all of you. I don't have any special agenda tonight, but it's always good to be here. You represent a great city, and you do a special job in representing that city, and I was always proud to be a part of that representation. It's good to see all of you, and I hope I'm not out of order, but I'm going to ask the mayor for permission to approach the diocese and shake hands with all of you and the staff before we proceed further with the evening.
That's perfectly fine with me, come on up, Bob.
Well, I don't have any speech tonight, you'll probably be glad to hear that, but I just wanted to say it's good to see all of you, and it's good to see the staff. I already shook hands with the staff, and I've shook hands with you, so with that, I'll say farewell for the evening.
Well, Bob, I have to tell you, before you leave, it's always an honor to have you back, in this room especially, I mean, you've guided all of us for many, many years, I mean, you wrote the city charter, and that means a lot to this community. And, you know, things are in good hands, Robert's doing a great job, but I want you to know, you're always welcome back anytime, this is as much your city as it is ours, so thanks for coming in tonight.
Well, thank you, it's good to see all of you.
Yeah, great to see you. All right, now, we're going to move forward into the agenda. We'll take care of the approval of the minutes. I need a motion and a second to allow Mayor Protem Bullock and Councilmembers Elliott and McElDowney to abstain from voting on the minutes of June 5th, 2017, because of their excused absences. Mr. Teeter?
So moved.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for that abstention. Now, I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2017. Oh, I have a motion and a second on the abstention. All those in favor of the abstention, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. We have a very long agenda tonight, and I guess I'm just trying to get through it. Now, I need a motion and a second for the minutes. Mr. Amador?
Move to approve meeting minutes for June 5th, 2017?
Thank you. Mr. Douglas? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are nine items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on this council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda? Saying none. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. McElDowney?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda items?
Ordinance 2140, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Tony Gramps Youth Services Grants Funds in the amount of $53,774 for the support of the youth epic program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2141, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Greater Outdoors Colorado Implementation Grant Funds in the amount of $1,845,918 for the support of the programs, places, and pathways, projects, Go Wild, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2017-56, resolution amending the directory of city fees and charges. Resolution 2017-92, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and the City and County of Denver regarding the construction of ramps to Peña Boulevard and improvements to Tower Road. Resolution 2017-95, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City. Resolution 2017-96, resolution approving change order to contract with Flatiron Constructors, Inc., for Tower Road widening project, regional drainage improvements. Resolution 2017-97, resolution approving agreement with Reunion Metropolitan District regarding regional drainage improvements. Resolution 2017-98, resolution finding substantial compliance of an annexation petition and setting a public hearing to determine if the proposed annexation complies with statutory requirements for such annexation, AN-246-17. Resolution 2017-100, resolution proposing funding in support of the Colorado Department of Transportation, infra grant application for design and construction of an interchange at 120th Avenue and US 85.
All righty, thank you. Titles have been read, I have a motion and a second. I will ask for a roll call vote on the consent agenda. For the record, the consent agenda is approved unanimously this evening by council. All right, now, we're going to move into the public hearing portion of our meeting. We start with Resolution 2017-88, Resolution 2017-89, Annexation 247-17, Annexation 248-17, and Zoning Ordinance 942-17. All five of these items will be heard under one public hearing but voted on separately this evening. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the city planning staff forward, and City Attorney Sheasley to begin the hearing, so if you guys would please get the hearing started.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Mr. Tims, could you state your name and position for the record?
Sure.
My name is Steve Tims, planning manager here with the city.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth with respect to this hearing?
I do.
Are you familiar with the annexation case files for Annexation 247-17 and Annexation 248-17, the annexation petitions, and the areas proposed to be annexed tonight?
I am, yes, sir.
I just have a few questions for the record. Has the city council adopted a plan for the areas to be annexed pursuant to CRS 3112-1051E?
Yes.
Are at least 1/6 of the areas to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the City of Commerce City?
Yes, they are.
Does a community of interest exist between the areas proposed to be annexed and the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed urbanized, or will they be urbanized in the near future?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed integrated or capable of being integrated with the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Have all the owners of the lands to be annexed signed the petition for annexation?
Yes, they have.
Have annexation proceedings been commenced for any of the land proposed to be annexed to any other municipality?
No.
Will the proposed annexations result in the detachment of area from any school district and the attachment of that area to another school district?
No.
Do the annexation petitions meet the requirements of law?
Yes.
Will the proposed annexations have the effect of extending the boundaries of the city more than three miles in any direction from any point of such boundary in any one year?
No.
Is the entire width of any street or alley proposed to be annexed included in the annexations?
On this particular cases, no public streets are being annexed.
Okay. And have all requirements of CRS 3112-104, CRS 3112-105, and Section 30 of Article 2 of the State Constitution been satisfied with respect to these annexations?
They have, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, and Mr. Tims.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. The first of several public hearings tonight, as you referenced, will be heard together, the annexation and the zoning for this particular properties at 88th Avenue and Monaco Street and I-76 Frontage. The applicant is called Azona, Inc., and the request is to annex End Zone to Commerce City C3 for two parcels in this area. If we look at the vicinity map, we see the property is currently zoned Adams County Commercial, it's identified here in red. We have Interstate 76, we have 88th Avenue right here, we have the two existing hotels, we have a La Quinta, and we have a Super 8 to the north, a Shell Convenience Store to the south, and then just to the west, we have unincorporated, Ben Frye has his gravel pit operation over there that he is utilizing. In terms of the future land use plan for the city, these particular parcels, again, highlighted here in crosshatched in blue, are designated commercial and highway retail, which fits as this is an intersection of Interstate 76. An aerial location, again, just closing a little bit more, you'll see the Shell Service Station here to the south, the existing hotels to the north, and again, this is a little bit old, but Ben Frye's operation to the west, and the Mile High Marketplace to the east. east. In terms of some site photos, these just show the various, the site from various angles, north and east, towards existing hotels, looking south, this blue roof is the Shell Convenience Store, and then, looking west across Monaco Street towards the mountains. So, the request tonight is to annex End Zone to Commerce City C3. There is a proposed four-story hotel. The flag at this time is America's Best Value Inn, which is under the Red Lion brand ownership, and also to have a multi-tenant retail, about 3,500 square feet of retail. As of today, staff's not aware of a specific tenant for that retail though at this time. There is administrative review for the hotel and retail building concurrently occurring via development plan case, and then, there's also an administrative consolidation plat to combine both parcels into one to allow the hotel and retail facility. In terms of the annexations, we had to do it, two different annexations to meet the continuity requirements of the state, and so, the first one, AN-247, is annexing the southern parcel here, and then, AN-248 is annexing the northern parcel. So, it forms this, if you will, this kind of L-shaped, and again, the subdivision plat that's occurring administratively will get rid of this lot line and have one big lot. It's also important to note that Monaco Street and the I-76 Frontage Road will be annexed into this property, so they will remain unincorporated. Monaco Street, of course, runs right over here, and then, the I-76 Frontage Street runs right over here. In terms of the site plan, just so council has reference, this long building here is the hotel. The front will face east, you see over here, and then, the retail area, multi-tenant, is up here. Again, the existing La Quinta is right over here, the Shell is right down here, and you'll see that they have parking, landscape, detention pond, with shared access using from the south and over here, and then, up to the north and west. In terms of hotel elevations, again, four stories, 100 rooms approximately we're looking at. I do have on the next page, we did get this last week, a color elevations there to give folks a representation of how the hotel will look at the time of completion. And then, the retail elevations, again, 3,500 square feet of multi-tenant will match the hotel as well, be complementary to that. In terms of the annexation approval criteria identified in the Land Development Code, the development review team does analyze that, does find it to be in compliant, that it does comply with state law and the Land Development Code, that it is in the best interest of the city and the comprehensive plan, as it is consistent with that commercial and highway retail activity. It is within the municipal service area. It can be integrated into the city. Capacity does exist to serve the use, and the annexation will not limit the city's ability to integrate surrounding properties in the future into the city. In terms of, this is from the Planning Commission, Annexation Zoning Approval Criteria, the Land Development Code requires at least one of these be met for the zoning classification, and the options are, the zoning is most compatible with the city's comprehensive plan, and that rationale by Planning Commission was determined to be met. What the C3 designation is most compatible, it does allow a hotel as a use-by right. The second one is, the zoning is most compatible to the county zoning at the time of annexation. Again, Adams County has it currently zoned C4. Commerce City does not have a C4 classification, but C3 is our highest intensity commercial classification, so that rationale was also met. And then, the zoning is most comparative to the present use of the property, well, that would be vacant, and so, that would not apply in this particular case. In terms of public notification, as of today, staff has not received any response to public notice for this hearing. In terms of the recommendation from the Development Review Team for the annexation, because that does not go to Planning Commission, the Development Review Team does recommend that the city council vote to approve both annexation requests of 247 and 248. And in terms of the zoning, which did go to Planning Commission on August 1st, Planning Commission did review this, they did take testimony and voted 5 to 0 to forward this zoning request to city council for approval. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. I know that the representative for the applicant is also here to answer any questions as well.
Great, thank you. Does the council have any questions for our staff at this time? Mr. Bullock?
No, I'm sorry, that's from before.
All right. Seeing none, as the applicant is present, would you like to come forward, add anything additional to the presentation that was just made? And give the council an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hu Lim, but I go by Jeff, so you can call me Jeff.
Okay.
I'm the company president. The company called ColloZona, Inc. The reason why we put the ColloZona is that we have some investors come from Colorado and Arizona, so we put the name as a ColloZona, Inc. And we are planning to have a 100-unit hotel, and also, we got about 3,500 square foot of retail space, and we wanted to kind of leave it bigger than that one, but because of all zoning issues and all those, it seems like it's going to be 3,500. We haven't decided exactly what we're going to put in there, but probably, there is a kind of a need in that area for the restaurant, so that's going to be the one that we are planning to do it. And also, we're going to have a little bit small, you know, retail space for about 1,000 square foot, and we are thinking about, that's, it depends on what we're going to do, the first about 2,500, but it's going to be like a small retail store. That's the plan that we have, and we are planning to hire at least about 15 to 20 employees, full-time employees for the motel, hotel, and also, are the two tenants that we are planning to have on the retail, you know, businesses, depending on what kind of business is going to be, it'll be somewhere in between 5 to about, you know, 10 to 15 new jobs going to be created. And here, I'd like to really, you know, say thank you to all council members that, you know, given us this opportunity to speak, and also, I'm glad to come to the City of Commerce City to have a first hotel, quote-unquote, business that, you know, you guys haven't had before, so I'm really glad to, you know, to operate business in the City of Commerce City. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Council, have any questions for the applicant at this time? No, not seeing any. I will tell you, first of all, thank you. I actually worked on a project for a four-story hotel on that same site years ago. Yep, before, when I wasn't the mayor, and Adams County wouldn't allow it to happen, but Commerce City has a desire for that type of use, and once you get this one done, would you please look at here, next door by the stadium, about building like an eight-story? We're in the market.
Actually, Lawrence and I were just talking about, about that, you know, possible-
You don't just talk amongst yourselves. We've got economic development folks that can help you through that process, so please, keep them coming.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sean, thank you. I just wanted to, Lawrence Depin Bush on The Architect, I just wanted to thank you for your assistance eight years ago when we started this process, and your staff was just wonderful. It has been such a great experience to come into Commerce City, and I am just thrilled that Jeff has stepped up and this thing is going to happen.
That's great.
So, thank you, thank your planning staff, and thank God for this nice project.
Absolutely, and thanks, Lawrence. Lawrence did work with me on that, and it's been at least eight years ago. Yeah, it's amazing, I still have the documents rolled up at home, the site development plans. So, we're looking forward to it, and I think it's important for residents to understand, as Commerce City continues to grow, we do have needs, and those retail, commercial, and hospitality needs are starting to get noticed, and we're going to start seeing more of that, and when you start looking at restaurants, you know what? I could tell you, there's nobody in Commerce City wants another fast food. We'd love sit-down steak, pizza, you know, well, we even have enough pizza, steak, Italian, that kind of stuff. Starbucks, all that stuff goes good on that corner, so just think outside the box. Ton of industrial in that area, you're going to have all the customers you want, and we're going to help you. All right?
Thank you.
All right, guys, we do have a question. Mayor Proten?
Yes, sir. I didn't hear, how many employees were you going to have employed at the hotel?
Well, you know, the size of a 100-unit, you know, motel hotels probably can hire at least like a 15, full-time job, not just part-time. Fifteen, three shift, yeah.
Great. All right, thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All righty, now, I need to ask if anybody in the audience would like to come forward and address the city council on this matter. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-88. Mr. McElhany?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Resolution 2017-88. All those in favor signify by saying-
Should I, sorry, Mayor Ford, I left it out of here, I should read the title.
Yeah, you left it out of there, and that's why I stopped and hesitated for a minute. So, I just want the audience to know, that was not my fault. That is on the city attorney. So, will city attorney please read the title?
With great apologies, Resolution 2017-88, resolution making findings effect by the city council of the City of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the City of Commerce City of the property with PIN number 172120011007, generally located west of Interstate 76 and north of East 88th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-24717.
Great, thank you. Now, the title has been read. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-89. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Resolution 2017-89. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Resolution 2017-89, resolution making findings effect by the city council of the City of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the City of Commerce City of the property with PIN number 172120011005, generally located east of Monaco Street and north of East 88th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-24817.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce Annexation Ordinance AN-247-17. Mr. McElhany?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to introduce Ordinance AN-247-17 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
AN-24717, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made apart hereof, generally located west of Interstate 76 and north of East 88th Avenue, PIN 172120011007, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the ordinance is introduced this evening unanimously by the city council. Next, I'm open for a motion to introduce Annexation Ordinance AN-248-17. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce AN-248-17 on first reading. Council is seated.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
AN-24817, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made apart hereof, generally located east of Monaco Street and north of East 88th Avenue, PIN 172120011005, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, introduced this evening unanimously by the city council. Now, I'm open for a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Zoning Ordinance Z942-17. Mr. McElhany? Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You want to read the title? I didn't think so. Just checking. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Just making sure the city attorney's paying attention. All right, motion is carried. Golly, this was a long one. All right, now, I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce the zoning ordinance, Z942-17, by council is seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce Z942-17 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
All right. City attorney, please read that title.
Ordinance Z94217, an ordinance rezoning from Adams County C4 to Commerce City C3, the properties described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made apart hereof, generally located at north of East 88th Avenue and west of Interstate 76, PIN 172120011007, and 172120011005, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. All right, for the record, that ordinance has been introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. That takes care of all of the items dealing with the hotel project on 88th Avenue. Good luck. We're looking forward to that new sit-down restaurant as well. Have a nice evening. Thank you. Okay, I've got some more public hearings to go through, but looking out in the audience, I have to say, you know what, it's a pleasure to sit up here and see all the friendly faces in the audience, and there's one particular person out there that I didn't notice until now, and I have to, I have to say something. Former councilman Tony Johnson is with us tonight, and he was a great councilman. And I don't know what's going on with people stopping by to visit, but I like it. I hope nothing's going to happen, but thanks for being here, Tony, you and your wife, Dottie. It's great to see you. All right, now, we're going to keep things rolling. We have Resolution 2017-86, Resolution 2017-87, Annexation 239-17, Annexation 240-17, and Resolution 2017-74. The next five items will be heard under one public hearing but voted on separately, just like the last one. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to invite the staff and city attorney to begin the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Mr. Kearns, could you please state your name and position for the record?
Excuse me, Robin Kearns, planner, Commerce City.
And then, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth with respect to these cases?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the annexation case files for AN-23917 and 24017, both annexation petitions and the areas proposed to be annexed?
Yes, I am.
Has the city council adopted a plan for the areas to be annexed pursuant to CRS 3112-1051E?
Yes.
Are at least 1/6 of the areas to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city?
Yes.
Does a community of interest exist between the areas proposed to be annexed and the city?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed urbanized, or will they be urbanized in the near future?
Yes, they will.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed integrated or capable of being integrated with the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Have all the owners of the lands to be annexed signed the petitions for annexation?
Yes.
Have annexation proceedings been commenced for any of the land proposed to be annexed to any other municipality?
No.
Will the proposed annexations result in the detachment of area from any school district and the attachment of such area to another school district?
No.
Do the annexation petitions meet the requirement of law?
Yes.
Will the proposed annexations have the effect of extending the boundaries of the city more than three miles in any direction from any point of such boundary in one year?
No.
Is the entire width of any street or alley proposed to be annexed included in the annexations?
Yes, it is.
And have all requirements of CRS 3112-104 and 105 and Section 30 of Article 2 of the State Constitution been satisfied with respect to these annexations?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Appreciate getting to be here tonight to represent this case for you all. We have numerous cases, two annexations-
Get a little closer to the microphone, please, just so the audience can all hear-
Hello, is that a little better?
That's better.
Okay, sorry about that. Again, thank you so much for having me this evening, council, mayor, and council members. I'm here to represent multiple cases for this property, Annexation AN-23917, AN-24017, a subdivision case S-65517, and a zoning, Annexation Zoning Case Z-936-17. Location is 11555 Chambers Road, and our applicant is The Landing Place Church. Our vicinity map shows us the current- Our vicinity map shows us the current property. It is currently in Adams County and zone agricultural, basically. To the north and east, we do have some existing P U Ds or residential areas that are part of Commerce City. Buffalo Run Villages west to the north, and Buffalo Run Villages east to the east. And I just want to note that this area overall is multiple, about 10 parcels that are all still in Adams County, but ultimately would annex in. Our comprehensive plan for this specific parcel is residential medium, and our aerial location pretty much shows the current conditions, which is vacant. It's about 20 acres, and through all of this, the applicant is proposing to develop about eight of the acres currently. Looking to the north from this property, you see the adjacent agricultural Adams County property. To the east, you're looking at the Villages Buffalo Run East and Chambers Road. To the south, again, you're looking at Adams County agricultural property. And to the west, you're looking at essentially the Front Range and the mountains. And I think today you probably see our new rec center coming up in that view. The current request is as follows. The annexation from Adams County, subdivision of this parcel into two lots, and then an annexation zoning to go with that, two lots, to do a C1 zoning and ag zoning. And then there's also a development plan, which is being reviewed administratively by staff. Request number one is our annexation. We have two cases essentially to bring this total property into the city and to meet state regulations. The first one, A N-23917, see the triangle-shaped property which borders Chambers Road, and then A N 240-17 is the remaining area or the balance of the property to the west of Chambers Our annexation approval criteria, D R T finds that this application does meet that criteria. It does comply with state law. It is consistent with our comprehensive plan. It is part of our municipal service area. It will be developed in the future into essentially to be commercial and potentially residential or other type uses eventually. It will be constructed to be served and is able to be served by water and sewer and the like, and the annexation will help integrate this property into our city. The planning commission analysis from the annexation zoning case, there are three rationale that are reviewed. In this case, only one met the rationale, and that is that the zoning is most compatible with the city's designate, comprehensive plan designation for the property, which again is residential medium. The requested zoning of C1 and ag is most compatible with this designation as residential medium, and I will explain that a little bit more in detail. Our request number two is for the subdivision. So with our parcel, our 20-acre parcel annexed, ultimately then the proposal is to subdivide it. It'd be the Landing Place Church subdivision filing number one. And basically, they'd be looking at making two parcels, approximately eight acres and 12 acres. The eight-acre portion would be where they are proposing their new church. The annexation zoning would be, will be reviewed through case Z-93517, which is coming up here. And the church building is being processed currently by development plan case D 263-17 and is proposed on Lot 1. Currently, there's no proposed plans for Lot 2. Looking at subdivision plat, we can see the proposed configuration with Chambers Road. There is designation of some right-of-way that's needed for along Chambers. There's also some designation of a east 115th Avenue, which will provide this property access, and in the future, it would also provide the property to the north if it were to redevelop. It'll also feed, provide access deeper into the property for Lot 2. There's also an additional right-of-way in the middle to potentially allow for internal right-of-ways north and south. The planning commission analysis for this plat found that the minimum commercial 1 and ag zoning lot areas and access requirements are being met by these proposed, this proposed subdivision plat and these two lots. And looking at our final plat criteria, there are the three criteria. Planning commission concluded that the subdivision meets approval criteria for final plats, that the proposed parcel sizes have been found to be consistent with the C1 and ag zoning, and the proposed plat will not create substantial undue adverse effects on surrounding properties, and adequate services are available for the existing and future development. Our annexation zoning is requested for the two lots as proposed in that subdivision case S-65517. The two lots, Lot 1 is being proposed for C1, commercial, and Lot 2 is proposed for agricultural zoning. Again, the church is being proposed on Lot 1 in accordance with the development plan in review, and currently no plans for Lot 2. I'll elaborate a little more. So our commercial 1, you can see zoning would be to the east along Chambers Road, and essentially the ag would be the balance or about the 12-acre lot. In our comprehensive plan, when a residential medium is along a arterial or collector like Chambers, we do allow for local commercial. So the church is, in effect, coming in as a, it fits best in the commercial zoning, and then the ag zoning is more or less a placeholder for future until the property owner has more designs on what would be done with that. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more here. Again, because it's along a collector arterial, that local commercial is supported in our comprehensive plan in the residential medium. Obviously, Chambers Road is a heavily traveled minor arterial. And in the C1 zoning, it allows churches by right as opposed to a use by permit if this was zoned like a residential-type zoning. And again, that ag zoning would be for future. To give you all a little bit of flavor of what our application development plan looks like, this has been through some iterations, so you're looking really at the final plan. We have a site plan, Chambers to your east, and this east 115th to the north that would actually provide access points. There is a third emergency access, but no direct access onto Chambers from the lot. It's kind of future configuration. See, the church building really presents itself more facing west, so they did some nice upgrade in landscape and the like to the east, and you have parking and retention to the west as well. Oops, sorry. Elevations essentially just providing some outlines looking south and north at the building and east and west at the building. Regarding our referral agency, referral agencies have provided comments with no objections to any of these four requests. And as of today, staff has only received one response, and that was just for additional information to be provided. Our recommendations for the annexations, the development and review team is recommending that city council approve the case, the annexation cases. Regarding the subdivision and annexation zoning, they were heard at planning commission on August 1, 2017, and in front of a public hearing, was voted four to zero with one abstaining to recommend approval to city council regarding these requests. So staff is summarized, is at the end of their presentation for this and is available. The applicant is also here to speak on behalf of the projects. We appreciate your time and questions.
Thank you. So it looks like there's a lot of folks here, and I have to tell you, it's a great day in a community when we can sit up here and have public hearings considering churches, hotels, and restaurants, instead of talking about bad roads, dogs, and other things that I've dealt with. So this is a very refreshing evening for me, and thanks that you're all here tonight to witness it. It doesn't happen very often. All right. Would the applicant, is there any questions for staff at this time? Mr. McElhany? No? All right, how, Mr. Douglas?
No, I just wanted to say, just a full disclosure, that I am a member of the church, and that I can, I can say that I can be fair and impartial in voting. Thank you.
I think you can too, Steve. Thanks, though. Councilwoman Elliott.
Along those lines, I am too a member of the church, so I would go along, I will echo my colleagues' comments on that. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz.
This is great, thank you, Robin. I'm really excited for you, Pastor Mark. This is very exciting. I know I've kind of seen that sign every time I drive by quite a bit, so thank you. Question, Robin, can you expand real quick where you said there was no access point to Chambers? Is that correct?
I would like to elaborate on that for you. Essentially, the future of Chambers, right now where there's, gosh, eight parcels all facing Chambers that all have individual access points. In the future, the idea is, because of it being a heavy, heavily traveled arterial, that properties wouldn't have direct access right onto Chambers. They would share typical drives like this east 115th that's being created, so you consolidate parcels to sharing drives that then have more formal access out onto Chambers, so we're not creating individual driveways along Chambers.
Okay. Great. Do you know if there's plans in the future at some point to put more traffic lights along Chambers right around that area, just with the parking stuff and 117th and?
I would believe at 112th and ideally at 116th. Okay. If that can ever get. These would, these interim, like 115th and 14th would not.
Okay.
Something like this actually would probably be just ride-in, ride-outs depending on a median, and I think 114th might be more of a full movement, but not with no light.
Okay. Just wanted some clarification on that, so thank you, Robin. Thank you again, Pastor Mark.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff? Saying none, I would ask the applicant to come forward and add any additional information that they may feel is relevant.
Mayor Ford, esteemed council people, we just want to thank you. We really have no other comment to say. We're proud to be part of this city. We serve about 1,500 residents of Commerce City. We started 10 years ago with six, and we've been very, very blessed to be a part of this, the fabric of this community. We look forward to serving it for a long, long time. Thank you.
Well, I have to congratulate you. I drive past all the time. I've seen the tents set up and the different events that have taken place along there. And I truly mean it when I say you can tell when a community's going the right direction when you start adding churches and things of that nature. So churches are a huge piece to the fabric of a community, so thank you for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. We're proud to be part of Commerce City.
Yep. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-86. Mr. Diaz, you want to do that?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-86. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-86, resolution making findings effect by the city council of the city of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the city of Commerce City of the property with P I N 172306000009, east Commerce City, Colorado, in A N 23917.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-87. Mr. McElhany.
So moved.
Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-87, resolution making findings effect by the city council of the city of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the city of Commerce City of the property with P I N 17230600009, west Commerce City, Colorado, in A N 24017.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce the annexation ordinance A N 239-17. Council is seated. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
No, I need a motion.
I'm sorry. Move to approve ordinance.
Mr. Bullock.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance A N 23917, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, commonly known as parcel 17230600009, east Commerce City, Colorado.
All right, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, it's introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. All right, now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce annexation ordinance A N 240-17. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to introduce ordinance, annexation ordinance A N-240-17. By council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. McElhany.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance A N 24017, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, commonly known as parcel 17230600009, west Commerce City, Colorado.
Okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, it's introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Now I'm open for a motion to, and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission on subdivision case S 655-17. Mr. McElhany.
Move to accept the facts and findings, or findings and recommendations of the planning commission on Resolution 2014-74.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution R 2017-74. Mr. Amador.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for that resolution. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Resolution 2017-74, resolution approving subdivision plat in case number S-655-17.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We have one more item, which is Z 935-17. Need a motion to, a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of planning commission on zoning ordinance Z 935-17. Correct, Mr. Attorney?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Bullock.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. McElhany.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now one more. The motion and a second to introduce zoning ordinance Z 935-17. By council is seated. Mr. McElhany.
Move to introduce ordinance Z-935-17. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
All right. City attorney, please read that title.
Ordinance Z 935-17, an ordinance rezoning from Adams County A1 to Commerce City C1 and ag. The property described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, located at 11555 Chambers Road, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Congratulations to y'all. We look forward to your new church. All right, moving on in the agenda. Another public hearing, Z 881-08-17. Going to invite the staff to make their presentation and open the public hearing. Robin?
Thank you again.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. I think those kids deserve like an ice cream from McDonald's on the way home or something. Just saying. Boy, that clears the house, doesn't it? Yeah, what are you doing? Don't even say stuff like that. I know. Yeah. All right. Robin Kearns, floor is yours.
Thank you again, all. Appreciate the time. I'm here to present zoning case Z-881-08-17. We are located at 8200 East 84th Avenue. The applicant is Elite Transport Services, Inc., and the request is a zone.
The applicant is Elite Transport Services, Inc., and the request is a zone change. The subject parcel is called, is currently called the Nance PUD, and it is here at basically just west of Highway 2, just south of East 84th, near Ulster and Uinta. Our comprehensive plan for this area, which is more or less the Irondale neighborhood, shows the parcel as industrial distribution. The aerial shows the property essentially in its current configuration, which is undeveloped. And again, you have the railroad tracks to the east, and then beyond that is Highway 2. The current request is as follows. The zone change is to be reviewed by our planning commission and city council, so it has been the planning commission. And the case is to zone change from this Nance Industrial Park PUD to I-2, just simply, simple Commerce City industrial 2. It's to make, this is proposed to help make regulating this industrial development and the use of the property easier. The PUD is a little bit, the current PUD is a little difficult to manage, so it is a preferred route to really just go to an I-2 zoning. I'll describe here in a minute with, it has these use areas, and it doesn't have lots, actual designated lots to go along with those use areas. And then there's also the issue that the rezoning would allow for the proposed rail spur that is coming in the future. They, to allow it, they either have to rezone or amend the PUD, so some sort of rezoning anyway was going to be required. So really, the thought was to go to a simpler zoning. This property actually does have a current approved PUD development permit for it, and this is a site plan from that permit. Basically, they've proposed a 9,200 square foot office shop storage building. There would be outdoor storage, approximately 20 to 30 employees, and the future right-of-way spur. Under the current PUD, you essentially have three use areas, use area A, B, and C. And use area A is more or less an I-2. Use area B is more or less an I-1. And if you're all familiar, the big differences there are outdoor storage is allowed in I-2, it is not allowed in I-1. And also, the fixing of heavy equipment trucks is allowed in I-2 where it's not allowed in I-1. But these lines are just simply designating areas, not actual parcel separations. And another point is that the use area C is only allowed for retention and detention. So if there was this idea to bring a railroad spur, which is in the works through here, this PUD had to be amended anyway to allow this use area to allow that spur. So we were going to be in some sort of rezoning. The referral agency comments provided no objections to this rezoning request. In the planning commission analysis, did find that the I-2 zoning is appropriate. The future land use plan does designate areas industrial distribution. The property already allows both an I-1 and I-2 uses. And again, if it's rezoned to just I-2, it'd allow for the administration of use to be easier. The property meets our minimum I-2 zoning. The approved development, PUD development permit, has also met I-2 zoning. It is located in the Irondale neighborhood, and we do have numerous recent approvals for industrial businesses and rezonings nearby. And again, this rezoning would also allow for a future railroad spur to come across this property and then serve the industrial park area to the west. Looking at the zone change requirements, basically, this application meets all six that are applicable. And as of today, staff has received no responses to public notice. On August 1st, 2017, planning commission held a public hearing for this case and voted 5-0 to recommend approval to city council regarding this request. And that would conclude my presentation. I'm available for questions, as well as the applicant. So we appreciate your time on this.
Great, thank you. Does the council have any questions for the staff at this time? Saying none? All right, I'd like to invite forward the applicant, if they would like to come forward and give us any additional information. First of all, welcome, and I'm glad that you guys are here. It appears everything's been taken care of. Hopefully, your business is going forward and it's all good.
Yes.
That's what I want to hear.
Just like to say, thank you for the opportunity to rezone this property. We're going to put this building, new building there, so thank you.
Well, we want you to be successful. And thank you for taking the initiative to build something in our community, to benefit the residents and to help yourselves as well. Any council members have any questions for the applicants? Mr. McAldoney? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, sir. Just a question. We've obviously seen this development plan, which includes the shop space. Can you talk a bit about the intensity of use of the space in terms of types of, the volume of activity and moving on and off that property, the nature of vehicles? Do we have any sense of how that property intends to be used, or is that still to be determined?
I own a trucking company, and I'm building this building to work on my equipment, maintain it. As far as the volume, don't really know right now. How much is it going to be coming in or out?
Do you have any, any sort of a ballpark in terms of, is it five a day, 50 a day? I mean, just some sort of a rough sense of...
I would say about 20 to 25.
Okay. And that'll be using 84th Avenue to move to the west and then connect with Rosemary?
Rosemary or...
And then either out to 88th or out to Highway 2?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, with that, can I add on to that real quick? I just met with Instill Steel, who's the applicant across the street that's building the big steel company, and they're making improvements to Ulster. And I know they've agreed a lot of their traffic's going to utilize Ulster instead of 84th. And I think it's, is it 80, which one gets closed?
83rd.
84th?
83rd. 83rd and Ulster.
83rd is going to be closed. And a lot of their traffic's going to be going out Ulster. So with improvements on Ulster, I don't know, it might be better to help split some of that up because the volumes that are on Rosemary, you get out to 88th.
Well, and that's, thank you, Mayor. That's kind of where I was going, was just trying to get a sense of what the planned evolution of the property was relative to the traffic movements that we know are already burdening that area, and with the addition of Instill Steel and how those local roadways are going to improve. I just didn't know if there had been conversations, sir, with you and staff in terms of any role that you guys would be playing in terms of weighing in on those, the evolution of those roadways, or what participation you might have in helping to improve as your property takes shape. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't been approached about anything to do with the movement or anything. We own about seven trucks right now. We're looking forward to growing our business. Building this building will obviously help us. It would also generate probably about another 15 jobs. Right now, we have, I want to say about 15 of us.
If I can just have you, can you just grab that microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Just, I can just hear you, but I want to make sure everybody else is able to hear you as well.
Like I was mentioning, we have about 15 employees, and we are going to generate about another 15 to 20 jobs. We have seven trucks right now. I think Carlos kind of misunderstood you a little bit there with that question. We are looking into moving into other, how do I explain it? We're going to continue to do trucking, but we also want to move into other stages of our life. Like, we want to, obviously, we're building three bays, so we want to, might do a little bit of mechanic in there. It's not all going to be trucking.
Okay.
So, and we're going to move into more like brokers and things like that, so, but I think we're going to stay about 10 to 15 trucks the most.
Okay.
So...
I appreciate that added clarity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And staff could just add that through the PUD development permit, they are providing additional right-of-way to help ultimately increase our, these right-of-way sections.
Thank you.
And if I'm right, Ulster becomes a dead end from your property to the south, correct?
Yes, correct.
Right. So I think everything kind of funnels out to the north. And knowing that, that entire area is industrial in nature, I'm sure that there will be a lot of development of more ins and outs. As that continues to kind of change and transition from pieces of residential, pieces of industrial, pieces of ag. So we'll see how that, that works out. But thanks for the planning department for pointing out that, yes, there has been right-of-way dedicated in this case. Is there any other questions for the applicant before I move on? Saying none, thank you very much for coming into the seat.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning and zoning on ordinance Z-88-08-17. Mr. McAldoney?
Move to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission.
Mr. Bullock?
Thanks.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce zoning ordinance Z-881-08-17 by council seated. Mr. Amador?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McAldoney.
Second.
All right. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance Z-881-0817, an ordinance rezoning from PUD to I-2. The property described in Exhibit A, attached Tier 2 and made a part hereof, located at 8200 East 84th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. Last for a roll call vote? For the record, the ordinance is introduced unanimously this evening by city council. And we have two items, Resolution 2017-65 and Resolution 2017-71. They will be heard under one public hearing but voted on separately. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to make their presentation. Mr. Timms?
Good evening again. Pleasure to present a second time for you all. We have a lot tonight, but we're making good, good progress. These two particular cases are a, if you remember, they're a continuation from last month. We heard one of these metro district changes, and tonight we have two more. So tonight, we have amended and restated service plans for the following metro districts. We have M.D. 103, which is the Potomac Farms, and M.D. 105, which is Buffalo Run Mesa. And just so everyone is, has the same geography in mind, for the M.D. 103 is Potomac Farms. This is about 116 and a half acres. 104th is to the south, and Potomac is to the east, and Turnberry Development is just to the west, and the new rec center is just off the screen to the north. This particular PUD zoning is for residential development. You all know that there's that North Forest office on the very corner. That's not a part of this application, Joe, just the residential piece. And then for the Buffalo Run Mesa, 170 acres. Again, we have 104th Avenue to the south. We have the Second Creek Flood Plain that runs just to the west. We have Reunion that occupies to the north and to the east of this site. And this property is a zone PUD for residential development. Everything's included within it. So again, the purpose of a metro district and a service plan, what it does is it finances the construction of the public improvements for the use and benefit of those taxpayers of the district. And the service plan does authorize the district to issue debt and to provide those public improvements, and then the debt's paid through fees and tax revenues collected from the mill levy through the property tax. And the district debt is not an obligation of the city and does not impact the city's budget. So it's a separate, entirely separate entity and organization. So the purpose of these tonight, just as it was last month, is to amend, to remove the mill levy cap that's currently at 50. Both of these developments are built out, so the infrastructure's in place. And then the rationale behind is to refinance at a lower interest rate, to lower their annual interest costs on the debt, and to pass that savings to the homeowners. And I believe in your packets, the narrative letter from the applicant talks about their current interest rate and how this can be beneficial to them. Again, these were negotiated back, 2001 is Potomac Farms, and 2002 is Buffalo Mesa. Obviously, you know, that's approaching now 15, 16 years, so a lot's changed with financially and just infrastructure-wise since that time. And then you'll see that all their obligations are complete, and that the attachments included include the legal descriptions of vicinity maps and an intergovernmental agreement as well. So the development review team reviewed this, including finance, the attorney's office, city manager's office, public works, planning. Does recommend that city council approve these two of the amended and restated service plans for Potomac Farms and Buffalo Mesa. And with that, it's a quick presentation, but I'll be glad to answer anything, and also, the applicant is here as well.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions of the staff from the council this evening concerning Resolution 2017-65 and 2017-71? Saying none, I'd ask if the applicant has anything they'd like to come forward and No? Anything you'd like to add to that short presentation?
Actually, I don't. Thank you for your time and...
All right, well, it's good that you came up here anyway. Just to give an opportunity, if any council members have any comments or questions they'd like to ask of the applicant, now's the time. Saying none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the city council on this matter? Saying no one, I will close the public hearing. And I'm open for a motion. Resolution 2017-65. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution 2017-65.
Thank you, Mr. McAldoney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-65, resolution approving both the amended and restated Potomac Farms Metropolitan District Service Plan and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the Potomac Farms Metropolitan District.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-71. Mr. McAldoney?
Move to approve Resolution 2017-71.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-71, resolution approving both the amended and restated Buffalo Run Mesa Metropolitan District Service Plan and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the Buffalo Run Mesa Metropolitan District.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we have ordinances on first reading. You have A.N.-241-17, A.N. 242-17, and A.N. 243-17. The following three matters will be heard under one presentation but voted on separately. I'd like to invite the staff to make their presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Honorable Mayor and Council. So these cases are case A.N. 241-17, A.N. 242-17, and A.N. 243-17. This is a request to annex 71.23 acres of city-owned land for the expansion of Colorado State Highway 2. The applicant is the city of Commerce City, and my name is Dominic, and I'm one of our city planners, and I will be presenting these cases tonight. So the subject property is a pretty significant portion between, along Highway 2 and between East 80th Avenue and the intersection of Highway 2 and Interstate 76. There are multiple portions of right-of-way that are not under the city's jurisdiction but are owned by the city. This case is broken up into three separate cases to meet the Colorado revised statute requirements for consecuity. So the indicated purple area is annexation 241, and the two areas in the middle between East 96th Avenue and East 104th Avenue are annexations 242 and 243-17. The future land use designation for the right-of-way is not specifically listed in our comprehensive plan, but the proposed widening of Colorado State Highway 2 is in conformance with the 2010 transportation master plan. So the request is to annex the subject property of 71, roughly 71 acres of city-owned property. The subject properties will be used as... These subject properties will be used as additional right-of-way for the city's expansion of Highway Two from two lanes to four lanes. And as the city of Commerce City does not assign zoning designations to right-of-way, um, there are no additional zoning cases that are going to be considered by you tonight. The aforementioned annexations do meet the annexation criteria within the Land Development Code. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the best interest of the cities served. Um, it is within the municipal service area and it is integrated into the city in compliance of the Land Development Code and will be utilized as right-of-way as identified in the two thousand and ten transportation master plan. Out of capacity is in place for the entire site from Eightieth Avenue all the way up to I seventy-sixth. And the annexation of these various parcels will make it easier for future properties to annex into Commerce City as that occurs. So the development review team recommends that the city council approve the proposed annexations. And staff is available to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Great, thank you. Most controversial public hearing we've had this evening.
Yes, I just want to ask one question.
I'm going to let you. All right, now, is, uh, anyone in the audience, uh, that would like to come forward and address the council on this? Seeing no one? All right, uh, council, you have questions for the staff? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, on this, uh, annexation, is it on both sides of Highway Two or is it just on one side of Highway Two?
It varies along the course of the route. Um, there are some portions where, um, the actual area that's within Commerce City boundaries sort of goes through the middle and jogs around in various portions. Um, but the majority of the area to be annexed is, um, in between the Rocky Mountain Arsenal and current city boundaries, so more towards the, the eastern portion of the right-of-way.
Thank you. Now, it brings up a question for me. Because when, um, the refuge, uh, the, the land for the, the arsenal was dedicated to the refuge systems, I know that a hundred-foot buffer from, uh, the roadway was given up that Commerce City got all the way.
Fence line.
From the fence line, yep. From the fence line to the road, that hundred-foot becomes city property. And that's part of what we're annexing here on that western portion. Why didn't we include the annexation to annex that same strip up Ninety-sixth since we're doing it? Is that, I mean, does that make sense? I mean, if we're taking in some of this city land that wasn't annexed, why wouldn't we do that strip along the, the northern side of the refuge? Because, uh, from my remembrance, I don't remember ever annexing that in either.
I remember it was given to us an hour.
Yeah.
Thought it was ours.
It was dedicated, but it's, it's still...
My understanding, Mayor Ford, is that this property being annexed is from the devolution from, uh, C dot.
Okay.
For that property, not, and I don't know about the...
It's not from the fence to the road?
I don't know if it includes that territory.
I don't know the answer either to that hundred-foot strip along the fence line, but we can certainly check. It would seem to me that if it, it would have been annexed in when it was dedicated to the city.
No, that, you know what? They ended up giving it to us. I don't recall that we ever annexed it, but I would ask the staff look to see.
Sure.
And, and if we haven't annexed that, I think that's important. We'd probably try to get that piece.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That perimeter around that refuge, um, annexed. Because where you have the blue line, just made sense that, I know there's that, a strip along that northern side too. All right, Mr. McAdonny?
Well, I, just to follow that, I, I think, had we annexed that at the point of conveyance, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion now. Because that entire segment was property of the arsenal. It, otherwise, we'd be annexing it from this, I mean, I guess it's sitting, yeah. It, so either way, I, I guess, we, we need to proceed with this, but I do think we need to understand what's up with the remaining boundaries that abut or become part of Commerce City, as the mayor said, Ninety-sixth Avenue, as well as that portion on the east side of the refuge up to the, uh, along the old Buckley Road to the Denver, uh, boundary. So, um, I'd be keen to understand.
You know what, and, and bringing that up, uh, take a look at the other piece, um, that Cronky has control of there by the Clean Water Treatment Plant Two. Make sure that's been annexed. Because that was all part of that refuge.
Right.
And so just kind of look around that entire refuge with the changes and, and with some of the land that was dedicated, some that was purchased. I know we did the stuff where we're sitting here. That piece that Cronky has over there may have been done, but I don't know about those perimeters. So just, just take a, an overall look and we'll clean it up.
Well, the other interesting piece is, we did partner with the, with Fish and Wildlife to do the moot setback of the fence in conjunction with that hundred-foot boundary. And that was the, the project in which we added the soft-surface trails along the three sides of the refuge. So, yeah, it would be interesting if we did that, yet we didn't technically control the property, so, either way.
All right, just a thought, since it was, it came up. Any other, uh, questions concerning, uh, the annexations that are before us? Seeing none, we'll move forward. I need a motion and a second to introduce annexation ordinance AN two four one dash one seven. Mr. McAdonny.
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
All right. With the city attorney, please read the title.
AN two four one one seven, an ordinance annexing to the city of Commerce City, certain contiguous unincorporated and municipally-owned territory described in Exhibit A, generally located along the Highway Two right-of-way from East Eightieth Avenue ju- to just south of the intersection of Highway Two and Interstate Seventy-six.
Thank you. Last for a roll call vote. For the record, it's introduced unanimously this evening. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce annexation ordinance AN two four two dash one seven. Uh, Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce AN dash two four two dash one seven. On first reading, council is seated.
Thank you, Mr. Amador.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney, please read the title.
AN two four two one seven, an ordinance annexing to the city of Commerce City, certain contiguous unincorporated and municipally-owned territory, described in Exhibit A, generally located along the Highway Two right-of-way between East Ninety-sixth Avenue and East one Hundred and Fourth Avenue.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call vote. For the record, it's, uh, introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Now, I'm open for motion to introduce annexation ordinance AN two four three dash one seven. Councilwoman Carson.
Move to introduce ordinance AN two four three dash one seven. First reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. With the city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance AN two four three one seven, an ordinance annexing to the city of Commerce City, certain contiguous unincorporated and municipally-owned territory described in Exhibit A, generally located along the Highway Two right-of-way between East Ninety-sixth Avenue and East one Hundred and Fourth Avenue.
Thank you. Last for a roll call vote. For the record, uh, it's introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Now, we move into administrative, uh, business. Um, is there any administrative business come before the council this evening? I do have one item. Tonight, very special night, only happens once a year. It is Councilwoman J.D. Carson's birthday. So happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Councilwoman.
Happy birthday.
After we're done, if you stick around, we'll go in the back and have a piece of birthday cake.
Okay.
All right? All right, any other administrative council business?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McAdonny? No?
I thought you were going to sing "Happy Birthday."
Oh, you know what? We can.
No, I'm just kidding.
All right, yeah, we should. You know what? It would be awesome. We've got Troy Smith up here.
Yeah, smile.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, shut off the TV, speed.
We have a lot of time to spare, so feel free.
All right, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir. Um, I'd like to, um, before we leave as council people, I've been thinking about this and meaning to bring it up, but we're allowed as council people to, after you've served one term and you enter your fifth year, to have, uh, golf and recreation privileges. I would like to have that same privilege for our spouse or significant other because, um, I just feel like, um, they're a part, whether you know it or not, a lot of times of this council with the sacrifices they make towards a lot of the things we do. And for, if you're going to go work out and you say, okay, I'm going to go work out and your spouse says, well, I'd like to go with you, and you say, well, you can, but you have to pay. Uh, or you're going to play golf and the same thing occurs, I would like to, um, extend that benefit to our spouse or significant other, just as it would be to us after our fifth year. And I mean, do I have any objection to anyone on council that would, uh, object to that?
Would you make that in the form of a motion?
I will, uh, okay, Mr. Douglas.
Mr. Douglas. Yeah, I don't object, just want to add to it. Um, yeah, I, uh, I feel the same, the, the same way too, because as you get older, it's, it's kind of nice that your, your best friend, your wife, your, your, your partner in life, uh, is, is there with you and, um, it's, it's nice to keep each, each other going. And just wanted to add, as far as, as far as the golf, I know there's, uh, um, there is a twosome, if that could be a foursome instead of a twosome.
Can we add that to the motion? He wasn't listening.
I'm listening. I will, uh, make that as a motion.
Do you know what he said?
Oh, okay, um, I wasn't listening.
It was a motion.
I know, Mr. Douglas.
It was a motion that, sort of having, uh, doubles in the cart to have a foursome.
I will accept that amendment.
Would you like to make a motion?
Make that as a motion, please.
Like to make a motion that going forward, um, any council members that serve five years, uh, conceptively, um, would be able to add their spouse onto the Parks and Recs pass and then the foursome of the golf course.
Is there a second? Mr. Bullock?
I second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Happy birthday, but my husband gets one great gift.
You know, honestly, I was thinking about that. Councilwoman Carson, it's really tough that you get a golf, uh, privilege and your husband doesn't.
That's right.
And you don't golf and he does.
I don't go with him.
Yeah.
So, he doesn't golf.
Right.
Mr. Teeter invites me quite often, so thank you, Mr. Teeter and, um, thank you, council.
Okay. Any other administrative council business coming before the city council this evening? Seeing none, um, go into reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email prior to this evening's meeting, this week's edition of the city manager update. We have a couple of updates on council action items and an update on a press release issued by the Department of Justice. We'll be, uh, back communicating with city council as we understand a little bit more about the implications of the change in policy with the Department of Justice. As always, reach out if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Um, just wanted to note that, uh, after our meeting last week, I had a successful conversation with the, uh, South Adams and Greater Wrighton Fire Protection Districts to move forward with, um, council's direction on negotiating an IGA and preparing an ordinance for impact fees. Um, that's it for my report this evening.
Great, thank you. I'll go through mine and, uh, you know, I always allow an opportunity of council, something they want to add to, uh, add. Um, so we had several, uh, several weeks have passed since we had a regular council meeting, so there is quite a bit on the, uh, on the report, so I'm going to try to keep it short. Rotaries every Wednesday, uh, so I've met, uh, the rotary meetings, uh, myself and Mr. Teeter, uh, have been to the Northern Area Transportation Authority. Um, we had our budget retreat here in this room, uh, so I want to thank the staff and the council, um, for a fairly long day. Uh, one of our candidates also, uh, was there and, uh, a resident that came to, uh, to witness the, uh, budget retreat. I did have a meeting with Suncor and, uh, met the new, uh, manager of the Suncor refinery. He was here this evening. I also attended the funeral for Phil Spano. Um, I had a conference call, I think it was very impressive because it helps set Commerce City above and, and above a lot of these other cities that are around us. You know, I grew up here, um, Commerce City didn't have the best reputations. And for, uh, the entire Canadian, uh, Mayor's Caucus to reach out to Commerce City, to invite myself and some of the leadership staff to join on a conference call, I believe what, there was seventy elected officials on the conference call at the time, um, because they wanted to know our best practices for dealing with the marijuana industry and the marijuana, um, vote that had occurred in the state of Colorado that made it legal and how we were handling ourselves. Uh, and we have one of the best practices in their mind. And, uh, so a special thank you to, uh, the ministry of staff and, uh, the attorney and the chief of police and all the, the folks that weighed in on that. Um, I think they had over fifty questions for us and, uh, after we were all done, they, uh, they did reach out with a, a big thank you for, um, bringing the information to the table. And I got to learn a little bit about Canadian, uh, zoning and things of that nature as well. It's very similar to, um, our zoning ordinances and how things happen here. Um, and since we did our legislation on, uh, marijuana by setbacks and zoning ordinances, um, it, it looks like a lot of them are going to lean on some of our best practices. So it, uh, it set us, uh, apart because they could have contacted the mayor of Denver or Boulder or any, uh, big city around us, but, um, it was, uh, it was, it was great that we had the opportunity to share that with a large group of folks in another country. Um, with that, I also was supposed to be at and speak at the Mayor's CML Conference, um, on best practices for, uh, our police department and some of the stuff that we've been going through. And I know the chief, uh, was at that. He had a representative of police department in, on the conference call with me. But the chief went with the Mayor Protem and thank you to the Mayor Protem for taking my spot to, uh, stand up at the CML Mayor's Caucus to, uh, talk about best practices in our police department and, uh, all the stuff we're doing with the Department of Justice and the assessment. So thank you, chief and, uh, Mayor Protem Bullock for attending that. Uh, also a great shout-out and I'm glad that we were a sponsor this year of South Adams Volunteer Fire Department Spaghetti Dinner fundraiser, um, something that's been happening for a long, long time in this community and I was glad to be a part of it. And I'm glad, uh, most, if not all, the candidates were there as well. ACED Executive Committee, um, I also had a meeting with Instill or Triple S Steel, um, that's developing the two hundred thousand, two hundred-plus-thousand-square-foot facility on Rosemary, um, concerning some issues of, uh, uh, process and, uh, sat down with Roger and I think we got a lot of that worked out, so, uh, moving forward there. And then, uh, we also had the Harvest Moon Dinner and it used to be called the, uh...
Moonlight Madness.
No, Moonlight Madness. Is that what it's called now?
No, it's Harvest Moon now, but it was...
It's Harvest, no, it was Blue Stem Banquet back in the day. Um, but it's, uh, it's something that the, uh, the Friends of the Front Range, um, which, which are volunteer groups that support the refuge systems all across the nation are these Friends groups. And our Mayor Protem, um, because of me, is a board member and, uh, at one time he was the treasurer before he knew it and, uh, I know he was frustrated because I did that to him, um, but I know he's, uh, really proud to be on that board and representing Commerce City. What that Friends, uh, what that Friends groups do, uh, nationally for our refuge systems is programming on all of those refuges. So making sure that the school districts get to go out and, and be able to learn about, uh, environmental issues, um, in their backyards and, and things of that nature. Uh, so every year they do a fundraiser and now it's, uh, Moonlight Madness?
Harvest Banquet.
Harvest Moon. And my wife even said, you think there will be a Harvest Moon? I said, I don't think they schedule that to coincide. But it was a great dinner, um, there was a lot of folks out there, uh, supportive of our refuge system and supportive of the Friends, Friends group, but it's, uh, an... Friends, Friends Group, but it's an opportunity for me not only to thank Mayor Protem Bullock for serving on that committee, but it's also an opportunity for me to ask the community to engage and take advantage of the resource that's in your backyard, go out, the gift shop's awesome, there's a lot to do out there now that you can drive throughout most of that refuge and see the wildlife. There are, the refuge manager and different folks in the biological end of the spectrum are there to help kids learn about wildlife and, and water and everything else that's going on out there, but it's also the only repository in the United States sits on that refuge, the refuge in our backyard, and most people don't even know what the repository is, but the repository is where any confiscated animal product, and, and some of that is from endangered species crosses into our borders of, of the United States, is confiscated and stored at a facility out there, and is one of the most amazing facilities that you ever have the opportunity to go through and see. And so, a few years back, all of the elephant tusks that had been confiscated by poachers were stored out on our refuge, and it was thousands of tons of ivory, and they did a program called the Ivory Crush, and they crushed all of those tusks at one time in the parking lot, and this just happened a couple of years ago.
2014.
2014. They crushed all that ivy at one time to send a message to poachers worldwide that we would not tolerate endangered species products coming into our, our country for sale and condoning their activity. So, there's a lot more that goes on on that refuge than I think any one resident has any idea, and it, it would be awesome if you would participate and, and go out and see some of the things. This repository actually has a program for all teachers to be able to get a suitcase which, which contains several different endangered species products to be able to take into your classroom and teach the kids about why these species are endangered and what kind of products are being manufactured and brought into our country for resale, and most people don't realize that either. So, because I'm on a little rant and what was just out there, and, and it's such an important part of our community, but it's an important part of our nation as well. We also have next door to that repository, the only bald eagle repository in the United States. Every bald eagle that dies in the United States can be put into a mailbox, is automatically shipped to the repository on the Racking Mountain National Arsenal Wildlife Refuge, and that bald eagle is then dissected, and, and all of the feathers and products from that bald eagle are categorized, and Indian nations have the right to go in and make request for those feathers and, and bones and different things from that bald eagle for reuse for their Indian nations.
Bald or golden?
Bald or golden, and I found that pretty amazing. You could find a dead bald eagle on the side of the road, you can stick it in a mailbox, and it goes there automatically.
You just don't stick it in there.
No, no, you don't, you shouldn't, you shouldn't do that. I'm not saying you should, but I'm saying that if you did, it would go there, so I was pretty amazed at that, that, you know, if you're, if you're going through South Dakota in the middle of the night, you hit a bald eagle, you put it in a plastic bag and put it in a box and put it in the, you know, but it does go there, and they have a viewing window where you can actually watch them dissecting these bald eagles and, and utilizing those products, and they have a lot of products that are made out of bald eagles there on display that Indian nations have requested, and I don't think that there's very many people in our community that realize that that part of our nation exists only on our refuge, no other refuge in the United States. So, hopefully, I've taught everybody watching at home a little something?
High symbol.
And hopefully, I've taught some of the folks in the audience and our staff, and maybe even a council member, something this evening, so with...
Mr. Teeter has a question.
Mr. Teeter?
I have a count about the newest prop they have out there, the bison.
The bison, so there was a, a bull bison that was stuck in a fence and ended up dying, and they ended up wrapping it with bob wire and allowing the other predators on the refuge to nature's way consume this dead bison. Well, they were, they wrapped it in the wire and stuff to hold all of it together, but then after it went to nature's use, they went and collected all of the bones and took it down and had all of the bones bleached and everything, and now they have a display of a, a bison skeleton there for viewing. It's pretty impressive. I know Thornton had a triceratops. I don't know what to tell you, we got a bison, all right? But we do have a bison. So, there's a lot to see at the refuge. I know Rick spent most of his life working out there, and he knows probably more about it than I do, but it's a very impressive place. Every time I drive out there, I think, why don't I come out here more often? So, please, you have a spare hour lunch, drive out there and enjoy your lunch on the refuge. I think you'll all be impressed. Anyone have anything they'd like to add before I move on? Of course, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I had a eventful trip last week. Wasn't part of the hurricane, but I was on east part of the coast and, and ended up in Atlanta, Georgia, and I'm glad I came back on Wednesday, if Tuesday, otherwise, I would probably have been there till Friday. But my week started out with the National League of Cities. I'm on a, I'm on the Federal Aggregacy Committee for Transportation Infrastructure, along with 23 other council members, mayors, makeup of different committees, Finance Committee on Transportation Infrastructure, Energy, Environment, Water, Climate, Natural Resources, Commerce, Housing, and we met in Washington, and we broke up into six groups, and along with other delegates from, from each state, senators, congressmen, probably about 46 meetings that we met, myself, we, with my group, we had eight meetings. We had to cancel one because of, the meetings were scheduled so close. We also had meetings with the White House, D.J. Gibbs, we got to also talk to Billy Kirkland, which we met in, in March, and Councilman McAldoney and staff met with Billy Kirkland, the White House, and I can tell you, Mr. McAldoney, that Billy Gibbs looked like he fits his description of his job. He's well-dressed. That meeting lasts about an hour and a half we had with, with the White House. We also were going to meet with Elaine Chow, but because of the hurricane, she got called away, we had a lengthy conversation with the U.S. Department of Transportation, and the reason why we went there is normally in March, our, we go, we meet with our delegates and we go see different department, you know, as far as HUD, Fish and Wildlife, the Army. This in turn was similar, same type of meeting, but we got to meet with other delegates from other states, and it was interesting to, to bring our issues from, from Commerce City to a senator in Oregon and to hear what our, what our CBD grants and what we receive based on what they receive, and seeing what their challenges are, and, and, you know, similar in, in fashion, but it just, you know, who, who we are. Our asks for CBD grants were under 400,000, and the city of Eugene, Oregon, they were asking for $5 million. So, there was a, a lot that, that went on, but I can tell you was very positive. When it comes to transportation, they're talking about these public activity bonds, a little talk about three Ps, Congress, let's say, on the House side, some don't like the three Ps, Senate side, they do, but a lot of discussions about everything, so I'm gonna have some follow-up meetings here in September, the end of the month, and also in October, prior to our fall meeting in, in North Carolina. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock, you have something?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Bullock did correct me. Apparently, there is one smaller repository somewhere else, but that one's probably insignificant and doesn't matter compared to the one we have, but we do have the only bald eagle repository. All right, with that said, I just didn't want anybody at home to see me in the grocery store and go, ah, you lied, so I always have to try to fix that. If there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce City this evening, I'm adjourning the council meeting. However, I am going to call the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District Meet...